Photo order of the Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 19, 2018. Pull the roll please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Annie Self.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Megan Spark.
Here.
And Dr. Rohr.
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion for approval of the agenda presented. Phil, go ahead. Pull the roll please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self. Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Spark.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next we have honors, which we're always proud to do. It's one of the best parts of the whole meeting. Actually, this is the best part of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Rohr. Tonight, we have three groups that we're honoring tonight. And we're going to start off with Stingley Elementary, so I'd like to call up to the podium Mrs. Koller, the principal of Stingley, and a guest, Don Larrick, and all of the other staff from Stingley that have joined us here tonight. So, if they come up to the podium, we appreciate that.
Good evening. I'm excited to have with me some great team members who worked hard on our character application. And while we're the people that put in some hours of time to kind of document the great things that are happening at Stingley, certainly, the whole staff, all the parents and students are really responsible for the great character that happens there. So, we have Marissa Quigley, our gifted intervention specialist, Suzie Croker, our technology teacher, Kathy Crippen, intervention specialist, Amy Hilliard, school counselor, Mary Hillsman, reading intervention specialist, and Barb Ray and Don Larrick are from the Character Council, and they have been mentors. And I kind of have teased them that they had to kind of adopt us a little bit. But I think they thought they were coming and observing Stingley for a little bit and then would kind of go on their way. But we just keep calling and we just keep letting them know some of the great things that are occurring at Stingley. Would either of you like to say anything?
I just want to say what a great school you have here, and what they're doing is very, very dear to my heart. You can't teach without teaching character. It is us every day and how we behave and respect and work with each other. And they are doing a fantastic job with your children.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, we have been selected and honored to be an Ohio School of Character. We are now in process of awaiting to see if we can be accredited as a national school of character. That will be determined here in the next couple of months. We are expecting a site visit from somebody from the National Committee. And I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning that some of the best mentors we've had are from Primary Village North. They are a national school of character, and they've really set the bar high, and we've kind of been standing on their shoulders to just continue the great work that they began with the kiddos in preschool through first grade. So, we have a quick video that we'd like to share with you that'll give you a little glimpse into Stingley.
What I like most about school is how welcoming it is. One example is when you first get here, there is someone greeting you at the door. Or when on Fridays, we all get together for morning meetings. That's what I like best about school.
What I like about school the most is caring for people around me. If someone is alone on the playground, I come and ask them to play with me. Or standing up for someone if they are getting bullied. I think it feels good when you do something good for someone else.
What I like best about school is the Stingley Alpha Club and Legacy Projects. One reason why I like Alpha Club is because we get a chance to help the community, and I get to share the experience with some of my friends. And the last reason why I like Stingley Alpha Club best is because I get to show everyone to choose kindness and to think about other people.
What I like best about school are the people. They can be very nice and helpful. I also like the fun projects that we get to participate in. The teachers are always nice and forgiving. Those are the things I like best about school. In school, I also enjoy the fact that students have the choice to join clubs like Alpha Club and Fitness Club. It gives us a sense of responsibility we didn't have in other grades. It also helps us get practice on everyday skills such as making good decisions and having an organized schedule. In conclusion, it is my opinion that we continue these privileges in order to create equal opportunities for fifth graders in years to come.
Congratulations to the entire Stingley School community, and we wish you luck on your journey for the national award here. We hope to hear soon. Next, a portion of our honors is I'd like to invite Mrs. Omandi, who is a teacher at Klein Elementary. She's here with some of her colleagues, some of her peers, as well as quite a few of her students, I think, who are going to describe a really neat service project that they worked on and have been working on throughout this school year. So, Mrs. Omandi, would you come up to the podium, please?
Hello. I'm Mrs. Omandi, and I am the teacher of this fabulous group of students, Team Omandi. We are known as Team Omandi. I am joined by my fabulous staff, which is Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Parrott. And I'd just like to say a quick thank you to our principal, Ms. Kurtz, for supporting us through this awesome project that you're about to hear about. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to my dean.
Hello, we are Team Omandi from Klein Elementary. Our class is made up of fourth and fifth graders. My name is Jaylen Lewis, and I'm in fifth grade. Unfortunately, two of our teammates couldn't make it. Ricky Finley, he's in fifth grade. Jason Majusakis in fourth.
My name is Brianna Jenkins.
My name is Sarah Michael Crane.
My name is Kayden Ackett, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Akma Farah, I'm in fifth grade.
We would like to talk to you today about the Kunku Cafe. We started talking about what a business is and brainstorming ideas about a business that could help the teachers in our school.
Our class made an announcement and asked our school staff about what drinks they might like to purchase. With that information, we created a logo and art in order form and speech, and made jingle and music to launch our business. Fortunately, several staff members in our building loaned or donated the supplies we needed to begin making coffee.
It takes a team to run our coffee cafe. Each week, there is a manager, order from organizer, brewers, assemblers, and delivery experts. It takes a lot of work to operate successfully. We learned to identify our strengths and weaknesses to fulfill these rules. We have learned organization math skills, pubg speaking, customer service, and what it takes to be a good employee and run a business.
Using some of the proceeds, our team decided to make a donation to Centerville's adoptive family and to Nationwide Children's Hospital. To honor our teammate, we plan to donate to other organizations. We also put some of the profit into our business to keep it running.
I learned how to make coffee. I like being the manager because you get to coach people on their strengths and weaknesses.
I learned how to carry hot drinks out to teachers and also learned how to fill big classrooms.
I learned how to make a jingle and logo to advertise our company and who we are. I like how we added muffins and how we are thinking of stuff to sell in spring. I also learned how to count money and make donations.
Ricky, I learned that working together is sometimes hard and not everything goes your way. I like the way that we come out with new drinks or taste each season.
Jason, I particularly like all the brewing, and I like the peppermint hot cocoa making for the class parties. I have learned how to manage money and put it in an envelope. I also like working with my friends.
I learned how to be a good employee and to not talk to my friends, but to talk to our customers. I like doing my job.
Thank you so much for letting us talk about our Klein Club Cafe. If you ever want a good cup of coffee, come check us out, which is located at the cafe, which is located in Route 12, Klein Elementary. Thank you.
Students, great job, and Mrs. Omandi, thank you for highlighting that for us tonight. They did a great job. And students, I think I had ordered the peppermint mocha or hot chocolate the one day. It was awesome. You did a great job, and we appreciate that. So, thank you for the donations and keep up the good work. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up one of our high school teachers, one of our career ed teachers, Mark Mitrovic, who teaches culinary arts at Centerville High School. His three students that he's going to highlight for us tonight and talk about their recent great accomplishments.
Hi there, my name is Mark Mitrovic. I'm the instructor of the Culinary Arts and Restaurant Management Program here at Centerville High School, and it's my privilege tonight to talk a little bit about the competition that we had just a few short weeks ago in Columbus that highlighted the business aspect of culinary arts. These three students before me went ahead and did an awesome project that showed their creativity, their big business skills, their teamwork, and how they all collaborated to pull together such a really cool project. I'm going to give the students just a couple of minutes to informally tell you a little about their concept, but if you can kind of picture that these students did seven-minute presentations five times to judges that were similar to almost being like on Shark Tank. They have to give their business pitch, and judges are deciding which is the best concept to choose from. There's over 53 schools in the state of Ohio that teach the same program or use the curriculum that we do here in Centerville, and it's really awesome that these kids put forth the effort and saw the reward by winning first place at the state competition.
Thank you. So, we competed at the Pro Start Invitational in the management competition, and at the competition, there's a culinary side and a management side. With our team of three, we came up with Jay's Little Diner for our restaurant concepts. We were in charge of coming up with the concept from scratch, completely from the ground up, and presented the judges with two posters and also a packet of paper. And with the packet of paper, we started with creating a menu with different items, including our breakfast, lunch, and dinner. As a 24-hour diner, open seven days a week, this is something that we emphasized to the judges, noting that customers, and especially college students, which the university is located nearby, could come in and enjoy a nice meal. Another big highlight of our concept was our layout. Being located in a similar location like the green, we wanted to bring in lots of foot traffic as well as lots of students walking across the street to our location. And this helps draw in customers 24/7, which was awesome. And we started this project in November, and starting out meeting once a week, gathering ideas, and then in January, we started putting the pencils to paper, creating the concept, rough drafts of the packet, submitting it to the judges so they could have a little look and a little taste of what they're going to read. And then come competition time, we'd done numerous run-throughs, including a late night, the night before, just to get that extra run-through in, and we're all very glad that we took the time to prepare, and it was a great accomplishment with seeing three of us, a great experience.
So, again, it's my privilege to kind of present Erica Taylor, Derek Johnson, and Austin Kick. Again, it was a great team effort for the three of them to pull this together and to have this accomplishment. But it's also worth noting that Austin, out of all the management teams that were participating, Austin was identified as a top leader of the competition and received a separate award for that. So, although they did a great job collaboratively and as a team, it's really nice to see that students that are leading and, obviously, he was picked to be our spokesperson tonight. The other one's like, "Oh, we'll hold the poster." So, again, congratulations and thank you.
Like Dr. Rohr said, it's always great when we can honor students. So, congratulations again to Stingley. Mrs. Omandi, congratulations to you and your students. And Mr. Mitrovic, obviously, your program's doing great things, and congratulations to your students also. In case you're interested, if you'd like to see this board meeting again, the board meeting is rebroadcast on Table 21. It'll be on this Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 1:00 p.m., and then on Sunday at 9:00 p.m. you can see it on Channel 21 again if you'd like to. It'll also be on probably many, many, many other times throughout the rest of the spring and into the summer and into the fall probably too. So, anyway, so you can't catch it on Channel 21. We're going to take a short break. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but especially those of you that maybe need to get home and finish your homework or whatever, you may exit gracefully now.
We'll get started on the meeting again. Next, our Board of Education reports. First one is legislative report, Mrs. Sparks.
Okay, first is House Bill 312, which is the School Resource Officer definition. This bill would define what a resource officer's roles and responsibilities are as well as the following. It would prescribe the training requirements that permit the SRO, the School Resource Officer, to provide services relating to the school district's comprehensive emergency management plan, specify the police powers which the SRO would have while on duty in the school, and provide that the school administration has the final decision, making authority regarding all matters to the school discipline. This bill is going through the House Finance Committee for approval, so school districts may be getting funding for this bill. Also, current SROs will be grandfathered in. The next bill is House Bill 312, the School District Credit Card Use. This bill sets requirements for school districts to use credit cards. Some of the requirements would be the Board of Education would adopt the policy on credit card use, advance the use of debit cards, any rewards that were earned would have to be reported. The board would appoint a compliance officer, which cannot be the treasurer. If any school employees carry a district credit card, this officer would also conduct reviews. The next bill is Senate Bill 246, Safe Act. This bill states the students in pre-K through third can no longer be expelled or suspended except for specific reasons that are stated in the bill. The voting principal must speak to a mental health professional about an incident before a student can be suspended or expelled. If needed, the school district will help students and their families find appropriate professional mental help for violations. All in-school suspension will be served in a supervised environment, and any school work being missed would be able to be completed. If this bill is passed, then teachers will also have to complete a continuing education or professional development course in positive behavior intervention and support, known as PBIS, within three years of the bill's effective date. School districts would need to use a PBIS framework, which would be reflected on the school district's report card. Districts would also have to report any pre-K, prefer, and suspensions, expulsions. Senate Bill 82, absent notification. This bill would require school districts to report any absences within 120 minutes of school starting. And Senate Bill 34, the school calendar. This bill would require schools to begin after Labor Day unless the school board adopts a resolution allowing the school to open earlier. That is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is students' board reps' report.
Hello, my name is Megan Rose, and I just want to talk about the new steps that we're taking for future applicants. And right now, there seems to be a lot of seniors in the audience, but we're hoping that upcoming juniors and seniors will contact me, Sarah, or Elliot concerning the applications. We hope to have those on the list or on the morning announcements by this Wednesday, March 21st, and then they would be due Wednesday, April 11th. And we just want to encourage more students to be involved in the board, and seeing that this was the first year of it, hopefully, moving forward will have even more change within the board and leading the way with the student reps.
Hi, I'm Sarah Goodwardna, and I was just going to talk about our recent candied comments session. So, we've had several successful sessions, but the last two have been really good because they focused on mental health and safety issues. So, several issues that a lot of the students have been bringing up is that they want more education about the resources available in school for all grade levels, such as the crisis hotline and the services offered by school counselors other than just for scheduling. And many students spoke about their appreciation for Mrs. Myers, but talked about how she's often booked and that they wanted more counselors in the school. And next, Elliot's going to talk about some of our future endeavors.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know, I'm Elliot First, and I am the student representative for the Board of Education. I would like to first acknowledge the students among us. They clearly want change and are willing to fight for it. My peers are tired. They're feeling stressed, anxious, and fearful when they walk the halls of CHS. What will you, as Centerville Board of Education members, do to change that? I know each of you, so I know that we want the same thing. We want to create an amazing school district, which we do have. That is why I am hopeful that as the school board, you will listen to the people that you work to improve the lives of each and every day. As student representatives, we will be meeting with Niraj Antani this Thursday. He's an Ohio House representative, and we are hopeful that we can further communicate all of our grievances and promote statewide change in the direction that our students clearly want. This includes, but is not limited to, the stricter gun laws, which have been the recent pressing issue, as well as mental health services. To my fellow students, your voice is being heard. Continue to fight for what you believe in, and together, we will create a brighter, safer, healthier future. Hashtag never again.
Thank you very much. I hope your meeting with our state representative does some good. As you may have seen in newspapers, this feeling was that 18-year-old students should be allowed to carry long guns in school. So, hopefully, you'll be able to educate him wisely on that poor idea. Good luck. Annie will be with you, so she'll do that. Next on the agenda, hearing the public. This is a time where Board of Education allows for an opportunity for public comment before anything is voted on. If you'd like to come and talk, please go up to the lectern, state your name, address, limit your comments to three minutes. If there are comments, we will address those later through the superintendent. Seeing someone stepping forward, please state your name and address. Yep. You don't have to be exact, we'll just do street numbers.
My name is Molly Jacina, and I live in Yeeke Trace, 9648, sorry, it's my home phone number, 9648 Old Georgetown Way. Okay, my name is Molly Jacina, and I am proud to have been a part of such a passionate group of students who made the walk out an organized, successful, and meaningful experience. During the span of 14 days, only four of which were official meeting dates, I had the opportunity to work alongside student council and see the true meaning of dedication and commitment. The representatives of our student body rose to the occasion despite the short amount of time everyone had to prepare. Each person was motivated and took responsibility, accomplishing more than I could have ever imagined. For example, Megan Canard took charge of community outreach and obtained a free banner, which was sent to the students at Parkland. Jackson Stolich leadership made this undertaking an inclusive and extraordinary experience. And Julia Lokai gave a poignant and powerful commemoration to the victims of the mass shooting. I have a new respect for student council and want to share with everyone my pride and love for my peers. When student council opened their meetings up to non-members, they listened to us and were engaged as if they had been meeting with us since August. Each meeting lifted my spirits and restored some faith in humanity. Every time we met, each person had completed his or her assigned task, but what impressed me was the eagerness to take on another job, even when the final date approached. The leadership of each member amazed me. Their work ethic and courage inspired me. I actually told my friend that I wanted to hug all of them because that's how much emotion I felt. Standing next to them in the stadium, I felt a sense of sheer camaraderie, honor, admiration, joy, and hope. I was holding back tears and searching for the words to describe the beauty I saw and appreciation I felt. They helped me realize change is within our reach, and that is why I want to thank them. Centerville's mission to produce responsible and motivated citizens was realized when 400 students walked out last Wednesday. I want to let my classmates know how proud and thankful I am. I do not want student-led activism to stop here. I believe Centerville students are capable of creating change and deserve the I believe Centerville students are capable of creating change and deserve the community's support. Thank you.
My name's Hassan Zawari, 9617 Old Georgetown Way, and I want to share with you guys a story that I saw throughout these very halls. Every day after fourth period, I walked down the stairs and made my way from the back essentials to the front. I walked to my lunch table and sat with my friends, but every day for almost two weeks, I saw a kid standing in complete silence with his hands in his pockets, listening to music, staring straight forward, not saying a word for what I think was his entire lunch hour. This poor child looked as if he had no one to talk to, not a companion, no one to relate to during his free hour of the day, to vent to or maybe to let off some steam. This boy stood right outside Mrs. Shaw's room in the hallway opposite of the yard rooms, waiting for his class to start. And as I passed day by day, I thought to myself every day that I would work up the courage to say hello to this boy and see how to conversation. I thought that one of these days I would do more than a simple head nod of acknowledgement and ask this boy to sit down and talk for a while. But I can't say that I did, and as the two weeks progressed, people started to take notice of this poor, desolate boy who was clearly lonely, seeking a friend to talk to, seeking a single companion to ask how his day went, so he wouldn't have to stand upright for 54 minutes with his headphones around his head, hands in his pocket, looking straight out the door in complete silence, left with nothing but his thoughts and the music he listened to. As the days went by, kids would go around this boy mocking him, producing loud, crude noise in front of his face, videotaping him, videotaping to see if the boy would produce a sound, asking for the others to stop, to stop bullying, to leave him alone. I stopped seeing this boy on the way to lunch. I wonder where he is. I wonder why I was too weak to say something about this incessant bullying, why I was too weak to even put a smile on this child's face. I wonder why I was only strong enough to tell his assailants to cut it out only twice. I wonder why we as students were unable to act. Nicholas Cruz is bullied. Adam Lanz of the Newtown murder was mentally ill. Eric Harris, the Columbine shooter, was bullied. Bullying affects 20% of the children of ages 12 to 18 in the United States and is commonly linked to mental illness as reasons behind mass shootings. Victims of bullying retain lasting ramifications and are susceptible to anxiety, depression, and outward forms of aggression such as violence. No one should be subjected to this pain, to this loneliness. Bully victims become angry. They may act out aggressively online to others or in person. They may not hit back, but definitely, but they definitely ruminate. Bully high school students are more than twice as likely to bring guns, not as your other weapons, to school as their non-bully peers. 71% of school shooters felt persecuted, bullied, threatened, attacked, or injured, leading up to the rampage. Why are we as a school unable to stop the bullying within our very own halls? Why don't we only talk about bullying once a year in our advisories and pretend that it doesn't occur the other 178 days of the school year? We have to stop this. We have to foster an environment where everyone is safe, happy, and not a danger to others. Our school board must foster a healthy dialogue with its students, teachers, and parents to end the vile and heinous behavior such as this. If we don't act, our inaction will cost us. If we don't act and make a change, Centerville could just as easily become named on a list that the president reads to his nation conveying his condolences to our parents, community, and friends. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt Hall, 330 Estate Drive. Hello, and thank you for allowing me to address the board. My name is Matthew Hall, and I'm a senior at the high school. Today, I would like to say a few words about an issue that could potentially soon be arriving in Ohio schools, of course including the Centerville school system. Recent ideas have been tossed around in regards to schools being classified as gun-free zones. There may soon be a proposal in Ohio's legislature advocating for individuals of legal agent stature, including students, to be able to bring guns legally into our schools. It is possible, given the trend in legislation across the nation, that such a bill should pass. The final decision would be made by the school board of each district. Consequently, I am here to urge the Centerville school board not to allow any such action to take place. Should Centerville ever have an active shooter, having a large number of students with guns in the building will not help stop the shootings, but instead only add to the chaos. In the heat of the moment, any student could be considered a threat and dangerous regardless of their intentions or merit. Additionally, identifying the shooter in a quick and timely fashion would be more difficult if all the known information about the shooter is that he or she has a gun. The raw facts stand to support this argument. How can we ever expect a trainer or teachers to as high a level as the police officers in the military? Even after comprehensive training, teachers will still be vulnerable to pre-conditions about each of the students. Who will carry the legal and psychological burden after a poorly-trained teacher kills the wrong student? No parent should have to send their child to a teacher who carries a gun, a teacher who carries the burden of protecting the entire school. A teacher needs to teach, not be a soldier or a police officer. One belief prevalent in American culture has never been more visible, the belief that owning more guns makes you a safer person. This idea is both pervasive and utterly ignorant, and increasing armaments of any capacity for fear and toxicity that can only hurt our schools and our community. I hope that if a bill on army teachers or canceling gun-free zones passes, that our administration and school board will do the right thing. I hope your decisions do not facilitate the next school shooting. Please keep these weapons out of our schools.
Hello, my name is Matthew Tarbell, address 354 Estate Drive. Thank you for letting me address you today. My name is Matthew Tarbell, and I'm a senior here at the high school, and I wanted to bring up something that I consider to be disappointing. As many of you know, this past Wednesday, there was a student-organized walkout to protest gun violence. I understand that the school administration is unable to take a political view that I had hoped the school administration would have taken a more active position. For those of you that do not know, the walkout was not a partisan issue. During the event, there was a commemoration for the 17 victims in Parkland, Florida. At no point did the school publicly acknowledge the ceremony. There was no mention of the $300 that were collectively raised for the victims of the massacre. There was no mention that there are now over 50 newly-registered voters at Centerville High School due to the voter registration booth at the event. Instead, the counter protesters that came to oppose the event were mentioned. In the Daily News, Dr. Henderson states, "While speeches were going on, these 20 students with a slightly different view listened and were respectful." Instead of mentioning the hard work that many, many students put into organizing this event, the people there to protest a non-political event received praise. I ask the school board and everyone in the audience to consider why honoring the victims of Parkland was not mentioned as respectful. I also ask everyone to consider that in the social studies classes taught at the school, we are taught that being active and sticking up for what we believe in will make us model citizens. Yet when we, the students, did just that, the school administration instead decided that no media would be allowed at the event, and we would have no means for communicating the plans for the walkout to students. The Centerville High School motto states, "Let us be known by our spirit," and I truly believe the students who decided to walk out of class last Wednesday did so in a spirited manner. Whether you believe our actions were political or not, there can be no denying that each student that walked out had a passion to support finding a solution to gun violence epidemic sweeping the nation. I hope the school board and administration believes in the power of the Never Again movement. This unprecedented movement in a matter of weeks has raised many millions of dollars and organized millions of protesters, including many of Centerville High School students. I hope the school board and administration appreciates the spirit of these students and wants to be known by it. Thank you.
My name is Mayne Canard, 9641 Burnett Isle Drive. Good evening, school board. I know I won among many people who are lined up to talk to you today, and I hope you've taken each of the speakers before me seriously. As they all noted, the largest high school student-led protest in the history of our nation happened last week. Instead of congratulating all of our students who took part in the history, our school took on the role of a scolding parent. I know our school can't openly support any side of the political aisle, but can't we all support commemorating lives? Can't we all agree that there are 17 desks that should not be empty in Parkland? After asking us to facilitate a walkout, we were surprised when we instead felt the school administration was strongly against us. The letter that was sent seemed more like a warning than an informational pamphlet. All I want to ask is this, instead of warning us, can't our school encourage an open dialogue? Can't we all agree that students deserve to come to school safe, and can't we all agree that those students should never have died? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? All right. First of all, before we go on, I want to thank all of you for coming up. I don't think I'll speak for myself, and I'm trying to speak for the rest of the board, but we are extremely proud of you guys. If there was an impression that we weren't supportive, I apologize for that. I think we were supportive. We were talking about this before. All your comments are amazing. Number one is, I hope you come here every month and continue to do the things you're doing and continue to make people aware of these issues. Bullying is a problem, there's no doubt about it. It's in every place, in every school, and you're the ones that are going to make change. You have to stand up, you have to talk to your fellow students, you're the ones that are going to make the changes. Please don't stop with that. Matt, in terms of guns in school, when our state representative this past week was promoting long guns in schools, an 18-year-old because it's quote "legal," I made it clear on a Facebook post that as long as I am on this board and I think most everyone else on this board feel that will never, ever, ever happen in this school district, period. This is a place for education, not for guns. We have resource officers, and that's what they're here for, not our teachers and not the students. So, and again, this is not a political statement on guns, it's just the reality of the situation. We don't want them here, and I don't think you'll see them for a while. Matt, number two, the Never Again movement, I think we all support that. You are making changes in this country, making people talk about things in this country. Don't give up. The key is not stopping. You know, a lot of these things, if you learn from other shootings, they talk about it for a week or two, and then the movement dies and protests die. Don't let this die. Keep going. You are the vehicles for change in this country. So please, I regret and I'm disappointed that you feel that you weren't supportive. I could tell you in speaking, in the administration, at our board meetings, at our work sessions, you were being supportive. And I apologize, you feel it didn't come across that way, but just know you have everyone's support. Keep going, keep going. All right, next. Yeah, please.
For the students that came forth, I thank you. I'm sure that the Board of Ed reps probably wouldn't mind. For those of you that came forward tonight, if you would like to join us when we speak to Mr. Antani, if that's okay with our board reps, I'm sure we would like to have you. I'm going to double-check with Mr. Carroll as to when that we can meet with, but Mr. Antani is going to meet with us this Thursday. If you've already established the time, you just need the room. So, if you would like to join us because of your words tonight, we'd love to have you. We'll just have you check with one of the Board of Ed reps, get with them, they'll let you know what room we'll be meeting in when it's this Thursday at Core, and we'll just meet you in the front hallway, the front area of the school, the front lobby. We'll find you, and we'll take you to room that we're going to, so I'd love to have you join us. Thank you.
Next, Treasurers' report. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over our superintendent's report.
That's okay, that's all right. I'd like to invite Mrs. Collier up to the podium. She's going to present just a very brief report, it's an annual report about one of our board policies.
I'll be quick. Good evening, everyone. Part of the responsibility of Centerville City Schools is to ensure that we're identifying and locating students who meet eligibility under homeless status. The Mckenty-Vento Homeless Assistant Act is what covers the services to be provided to students who are identified as being homeless. Homeless is identified in the state of Ohio as sharing housing with another person, living in a hotel or a shelter, living, residing in a public space, or a car, or some of our migratory students also meet homeless status for other reasons. The school district's responsibility is to provide services, both social services to families through assistance and to help ensure that they're meeting the same academic success as their peers. One of the big initiatives of Mckenty-Vento is that students are to remain in their school of origin, which means when a student meets homeless status, they're to remain in that school even if they move outside of the school district. So our transportation department has done a wonderful job in assisting us with getting students back into the Centerville school even if they're not living in our district. Currently, we have approximately 17 students and five families in the district that this impacts. Should anyone know of a student in the district who is homeless, please contact me, Laura Collier, at the Board of Education office. Thank you.
Next, Superintendent's report, Treasurers' report.
This is the Treasurer's financial report for March 19, 2018. Tonight, I have two slides about revenue and three slides about expenses. General fund revenue from all sources continues to meet or exceed estimates this year. The most significant part of our general fund revenue pie is the annual real estate tax collection, which is the portion of revenue that is the most difficult to project. Real estate is also one of the last parts of all the revenue categories to be known each year. The intent of this chart is to make it easier to understand how the real estate tax is collected annually. This chart shows the annual collection in a format that accumulates the revenue from one month to the next, and it does appear to be on track to meet or exceed the estimate for the year. There are two separate real estate collection periods each year. The first period ends with the September final payment, and the second period will most likely end with the April final payment. This chart shows the first collection period that ended in September, highlighted in red and was flat compared to last year. This chart also reflects how the triennial update beginning in January this year is impacting our second collection period. In a triennial update, the county auditor uses new construction and sales data to set the total district value. Payments for the new triennial period, updated values began in January and have continued through February. On this chart, you can see the advanced payments through this February compared to last February are up $4.5 million. Last year, the final payment was received in April, highlighted in green, which was the full amount received for the year. It is likely we will receive the final payment in April again this year. It is also likely there will be significant swings in payment amounts received in March and April compared to last year, depending on the timing of the collection and payments from the county auditor. At this time, I am still optimistic the collection will meet or exceed the projected $67.8 million estimated for this year, as highlighted in blue on the last column of this chart. This total represents a $600,000 increase over last year, which is an additional 1%. General fund expenses continue to trend 11.6% higher than last year at this time, as expected, but all the categories are staying below budget. Payroll and benefits make up the majority of all schools' budget, just as it does in Centerville. This chart shows the actual payroll expenses by month through February and projections from March through June. The reason September and March are significantly higher is because they are three-pay months. We pay our employees bi-weekly, which means every year there are two months that have three payrolls instead of two. It is likely we will be under budget, the payroll budget, at the end of the year, but not by a significant margin. The last slide is a chart that shows the actual benefits, expenses by month through February, and projections from March through June. The benefits category includes payments for the board share of payments to state teachers' retirement, school employees' retirement system, Medicare, FICA, unemployment compensation, workers' compensation, life insurance, medical, and dental insurance. January is significantly higher because it is the month when the annual health savings account deposit is made in one lump sum. 15% of this amount is paid back over the course of the year by employees through payroll deduction. The main reason the overall benefits expenses are expected to increase from January through June this year is because of a 10% increase to the medical insurance premiums. It does appear we will also be under... It does appear we will also be under the benefits budget at year-end, but again, not by a significant margin. This concludes my report this evening, unless there are any questions from the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mitch. Next, look at the treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the February 2018 financial statements listed below. Monthly financial report, fund activity report, appropriations report, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison. Purchase orders included in statement seven, approved by administration, then announced, certified by the treasurer, and supported by the board resolution totaling $17,011.78. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving the minutes of the following board of education meetings, February 26 and March 12, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Again, we always remind everyone, we're going through these pretty quickly, but these have all been discussed at our work session last week. Next, superintendent recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated persons listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment of the persons listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments, recommends the granting of leave of absence for the persons listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given, and recommends the termination of persons listed on Schedule N.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, considering accepting a resolution approving the procurement of building HVAC units and train label energy systems through participation in the contract of national cooperative purchasing alliance.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider accepting bids approving the best bid for CHS carpet replacement. Phase two and award Mr. Davis Floaring the relation, the project at the bid of $303,085. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider accepting a resolution approving the lowest of three quotes to Walmart for the purchase of 125 large screen classroom displays to replace outdated projectors in the CHS classrooms at a price of $1,199 each for a total of $149,875.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider approving the following contracts for META services, dedicated internet access and leased lit fiber for a five-year term at $2,275 per month with options to increase capacity during this term. Wide area network leased lit fiber connections for each school building for a term of one year at $10,480 per month. Again, these were discussed at our work session. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider an annual resolution approving current board policy, number 5111.01, homeless students, that was just presented. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. With happiness, the next one, consider approving a new five-year employment contract for superintendent Thomas J. Henderson for a term beginning August 1, 2019, and September 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second, you talked him into that, didn't you?
Yes. We're happy to have him stay on.
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, the motion for adjournment.
You got it.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Annie Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Thank you all for coming.